Steve and our TV is dark.
That's what I did the one time, I just fell down on my chair to go plug it in. It really scared people.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I would ask that you please silence your electronic devices at this time. I am Mayor Michelle Distler, I will be chairing this meeting. I will do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Present.
Councilmember Neighbors?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Kimery?
Present.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Adrian?
Present.
Councilmember Sandifer?
Present.
Councilmember Constance?
Present.
Thank you. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I will explain our procedures for public input. During the meeting, I will offer the opportunity for public input. If you would like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then you may offer your comments, so that members of the audience can hear your comments. I would ask that you speak directly into the microphone. Our policy comments are limited to five minutes, and no person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. After you are finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names to vote in minority, so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion approved, second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is mayor's items, and tonight I have a special recognition, so if Doug Rushel Schmidt would join me up front. Thank you. And I also want to extend an invitation to a reception honoring Doug on March 22nd at Town Hall from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So, moving on, the next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward and say your name and address for the record.
Ray Ehrlichman, 7510 Garnett Street. Mr. Powell, can I get access to the overhead, please, sir? Thank you. Uh, over the years, uh, one item that I've brought before this council many times in the past and sometimes online, has been the attendance at these various meetings thrown out by the National League of Cities. Many, many years ago, we used to have a whole agglomeration of people attending. It was discussed many times. And in the past few years, it's been knocked down, where we don't have that many people going. One time, there had been a suggestion made that only four people should go at the most: mayor, city manager, and two councilmen. And a former member of the city council even made a suggestion that those who went should come back and present a written report. That was done once, and only once. Thank you, Mr. Sandifer, about what happened at the meeting. So, when I looked it up, or did my call request for this year's meeting, I was a little surprised to see they were sending six people there again. Overall, in my personal opinion, I think that's an overload, and too much. And as in the past, I contacted other cities in the area to see what they were sending. And it's a mixed bag. We're sending six. Overland Park is not sending anybody. Olathen is sending six. Wyandotte County and KCK Unified Government is sending zero, and Lennox is sending six. Take it for what it's worth, that's the comparison to the other cities in the area. Some people may say, "Well, we're like certain ones," and others say, "Well, maybe we should be like Overland Park and Olathen." So we have six people going. And when I look at it, I say, in view of the fact that we don't have a city manager, we have an interim, and she's not going, Mr. Sunderman as the assistant city manager would be appropriate. In view of the fact that the mayor's not going, Mr. Zimmerman as the council president, person to take the place of the mayor in case of an event, uh, that would be, in my opinion, appropriate. Ms. Meyer and Mr. Sandifer both serve on national committees of the National League of Cities. Well, to me, that seems appropriate. I just think that the, uh, traveling of Mr. Neighbors and Ms. Constance will be a, shall we say, a expenditure that is unnecessary. That's my opinion. I wanted to voice it and get it on the record. It has been online already. And as in the past, I will probably be sending a call request, and this Roger will be waiting for it for the expense reports, because I want to see exactly how we spend the money when we get there. And that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any, uh, comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Renaud. It's R-E-N-A-U-D. And I just had a question, really. Uh, part of the consent agenda was to, uh, approve amendments of the zoning commission. In that last meeting, there was a subject that came up relative to IV's, uh, involvement with a property at Woodsonia and Johnson. Have anybody had a chance to read that? Uh, with that, did you approve that recommendation from the zoning commission? Huh? I know it was not approved.
That application, it was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, okay? I was, I was wondering, I thought it had to come here next as a final approval, because I heard they were gonna appeal it. And if they're not gonna appeal it, y'all have a nice evening, because that's the only reason why I'm here. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has comments on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public items. Item number one is to consider ordinance number 3214 authorizing issuance of federally taxable private activity revenue bonds, IRBs, and the principal amount not to exceed $10 million for the AirTechs Inc. Building 3 Project, Westling Building 3. Resolution number 1753 adopted on February 9th, 2015, expressed the intent of the city to issue IRBs in one or more series for the benefit of AirTechs Inc. These bonds are for the Westling Building 3, an approximately 170,000 square foot commercial building located at 43rd Street and Powell Drive. Property acquired with proceeds will be exempted from ad valorem taxes for 10 years, and ordinance is required to issue the bond. The recommended action is to pass the ordinance. Ann Smith Tate, President and CEO of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, has a brief presentation on this.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ann Smith Tate. As you said, I'm the President and CEO of the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, and the Executive Director of the Shawnee Economic Development Council. It's my pleasure to talk to you tonight about, uh, a couple of projects, actually. Uh, this first one is the AirTechs at Westling Business Park, the Phase 2. Um, we have a brief presentation that will go over kind of the highlights of the project. Uh, the developer, as was mentioned, is AirTechs. Um, you can see the project team up there, and we've been working, um, quite closely with the real estate and brokerage team of Krishman Wakefield, Whitney Kerr Jr., who's in the audience tonight, and Mel Holland, uh, to find tenants for the buildings out there at the Westling Business Park. Um, as was stated, the resolution of tent was approved in 2015, about two years ago, February 9th, 2015. Uh, the tax exemption rate is, is up there, 100% for years one through six, and then it sunsets after that, uh, to 70% in year seven, 60% year eight, 40%, and then 30% in the final year 10. Uh, the revenue bonds are not to exceed the amount of $20 million. There is a cost benefit analysis, uh, conducted on this, as there are for all of the industrial revenue bonds that are issued. The new city state taxes and revenues that were estimated to be, um, generated from this project were nearly $1.5 million. The cost, um, to the city in abatement, uh, just under $900,000. The city benefit to cost ratio is 1.7 to 1, and the payback period is two years. So just to kind of back up on those last two numbers, um, what that means, that city benefit to cost ratio is essentially, um, a one-to-one would be, uh, would mean that the cost and the expenses are equal. So 1.7 to 1 is that, uh, 170% of the cost will be returned to the city. Um, what the state recommends as, in a, sort of a base level, would be 1.3 to 1, so this clearly exceeds that. Um, and all taxing jurisdictions saw similar results. Um, the payback period, which is essentially, um, as it sounds, is how long it would take the city or the other taxing jurisdiction, specifically the city in this number, to recoup the mon, the numbers that, the amount of money that was, uh, abated is two years, though that is, again, uh, by the standards of the state, um, very, very aggressive and, um, definitely within the window of what would be an acceptable, uh, payback period. Uh, just to review, the building sizes are two 170,000 square foot, uh, buildings. The capital investment between those is 19 million. Uh, Building 2 is right now about 88% occupied, and Building 3 will soon be about 70% occupied. Um, oh, sorry, I forgot that. Uh, above, you can see the site plan for that whole project. The, um, final build-out calls for another two buildings, I believe, uh, excuse me, three, another 170,000 square foot building, and then two smaller ones. And then that is a rendering of the buildings that, um, as they're out there today. Do you have any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much. Um, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to conduct a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 1834 expressing the city's intent to issue private activity revenue bonds and the principal amount not to exceed $9 million for the JDC Shawnee LLC project. JDC Shawnee LLC intends to construct a 100,000 square foot commercial building at 8420 Hedgelane Terrace. JDC intends to lease 40,000 square feet of the building to NASDAQ as part of an expansion of their current operation. The other 60,000 square feet of the building will be speculative industrial space available for lease. The resolution is declaring the intent of the city to issue IRBs to allow the developer to purchase construction materials on a sales tax exempt basis, and receive a 75% exemption from ad valorem taxes for 10 years on the property. A public hearing is required. There are three actions required. The first is to conduct a public hearing. I will accept the motion.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We are now on a public hearing. This is a formal public hearing required by law. The public hearing will begin with a presentation from Ann Smith Tate. After Ann's presentation, I will ask councilmembers if they have any questions specifically related to the presentation, or then ask if there are any comments from the public. Once the public hearing is closed, we will have council discussion followed by a motion. Please go ahead.
So this project, uh, again, is a expansion of the NAS, existing NASDAQ facility, and an additional 60,000 square feet of industrial space. The developers, JDC, you can see, um, up on the screen, the entire project team. Uh, the building, 100,000 square feet, NASDAQ expansion, 40,000, that will result in a total of four new jobs and a minimum of retained about 16 jobs currently. The operation, which I just learned this evening, was the first in, uh, Business Infrumiter Park, has about 250 employees, and they've had, um, fairly significant growth over the past few years, so I think that this, uh, expansion is really just sort of the beginning of, of what's to come. So that new and retained payroll that we'll be seeing from that specific part of this project is 600,000 square feet, or $600,000, excuse me. The speculative industrial, the 60,000 square feet, um, I'm personally very excited about. One of the things that we are often challenged with is not having available space in our, um, in Shawnee to market to those projects. Uh, these projects are coming in faster and faster, I've seen that throughout my career. Uh, the turnaround time has accelerated quite a bit, so for us to have space that is, uh, ready and available to market will be, um, definitely an advantage for our community. The total capital investment of this project is $9 million. Um, again, uh, this also received the cost benefit analysis, as we discussed in the last project. The new city's taxes and revenues, just under $1 million, and new city costs and abatement are $465,280. So this city benefit to cost ratio came in at 2.29 to 1. As I mentioned before, 1.3 to 1 is really the base in which the, uh, state generally recommends approval, so, um, this is considerably higher. Um, and again, we have a payback period of two years. Again, also, um, fairly rapid turnaround in a payback, and, and, uh, we had really great, uh, results for the rest of the taxing jurisdictions. This is just, uh, let you know where it is, right there, um, near the facility. It's, there's a site plan, it's a little bit challenging to read, but the pretty picture says a lot, so. Um, we're looking forward to being able to market that additional space and to welcome the expansion of NASDAQ. Any questions? Any questions or comments in the council? And if you ever get the opportunity to tour the, um, business, it is a really neat business. Um, I, it's awesome, so.
Very neat business.
Yes, yep, yep. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, the second action is to close the public hearing. I will accept a motion.
Would you move to the public hearing?
Second. A motion has been made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. The final action is to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Would you move to the motion?
Resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Item number three is to consider an amended excise tax abatement agreement with JJM Ventures LLC for the Meadows of Chapel Creek subdivision located in the 6800 block of Kenton. On February 22nd, 2016, the governing body approved an excise tax abatement agreement with JJM Ventures LLC for the development of Meadows of Chapel Creek subdivision. The agreement included three homes and private and public improvements to be completed by April 1st, 2018. The applicant has requested an extension to April 1st, 2019. The recommended action is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended agreement. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is items from the council committee meeting of February 6th, 2018, chaired by Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes, item number one is to consider approving an accelerated outdoor warning siren replacement project in 2018. On February 6th, 2018, the council committee recommended 7-0 that the governing body approve an accelerated outdoor warning siren replacement in 2018, in the amount of $223,441.60 from Blue Valley Public Safety. $5,000 would come from the Public Safety Equipment Fund, and remaining $168,441.60 from the unallocated Johnson County Courthouse sales tax. Are there any questions from the council?
Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider Resolution Number 1833 authorizing the creation of a benefit district related to the improvement of West 53rd Street from Woodsonia Drive to Robert Street in connection with the construction of Fire Station 74. The governing body approved the acquisition of property at the southwest corner of 53rd Street in Woodsonia Drive for the construction of Fire Station Number 74. As part of the purchase agreement, the current owner of the property has submitted a petition for an improvement district to finance the cost of an extension of West 53rd Street from Woodsonia Drive to Robert Street. A resolution is required. The recommended action is to consider adopting the resolution. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider preliminary plans for Fire Station 74. This project is on the capital improvement plan. On November 13th, 2017, the governing body awarded the construction manager contract to Macallan Gordon. Based on their initial guaranteed maximum price, anticipated cost of furnishings and equipment, and the need to increase contingencies to pay for unanticipated project expenses, staff is requesting a revision to the budget and approval of preliminary plans. The recommended action is to consider approving preliminary plans for Fire Station 74 and providing direction for funding through accommodation of the unallocated county sales tax dollars and debt service, or for the entire increase to be funded from the debt service. Fire Chief Maddox is going to make a presentation. Go ahead.
Good evening. Excuse me, I'm trying to get over a cold. So, uh, when we started this process, we had tonight's date for the council to bring you up to speed at, uh, the 50% design drawings. So that's where we are. Uh, most recently, you've seen from an email that I sent to, uh, one of the city manager that she forwarded on, um, we found out we're a little off on the budget. So, I kind of wanted to bring everybody up to speed, how we got to where we are and, uh, where we are. Uh, so if you remember back in 2016, we presented to add the fourth station, truck and staff to the council, that was approved. Um, so we started with a station location study, evaluated several areas in Western Shawnee based on response times. We had about five locations that we looked at that was the most advantageous. Uh, we narrowed that down to the top three. Uh, those top three were 53rd Woodsonia, uh, the east side of Garrett Parker, 47th Street, and then a piece of ground at Johnson's, uh, excuse me, Johnson Drive, Woodsonia. Again, presented that to the council, but obviously the most advantageous, uh, preferred site that affected the most residents was 53rd Woodsonia, so we moved forward with that. Uh, July 14th, or excuse me, 24th of 17, we entered into, the council approved the, uh, contract for the property, and then as we moved forward, uh, we proposed and got approval for the, uh, construction manager at risk type of delivery, that was, um, almost a year ago. And then, uh, the last big step was in September when we entered into a contract with the architect. So, as we got to this point, we, um, through this, we also, uh, interviewed the, uh, put out a request proposal, interviewed construction management firms, um, we identified one that we wanted to work with, and we, uh, entered into an agreement for pre-construction services with them, so they have been along with us through design to this point. Um, and that is Macallan Gordon. Oh, we have a picture. So, this is where we are today with the site plan, and this is the site plan that we'll go in front of the planning commission next week. Uh, this is what's been submitted, and then I have some renderings also that, that the planning commission will see. Um, but I wanted to mention that, uh, the architectural firm has been working along with the department and the, um, the contractor to this point. So a little bit how we got to where we are from the department's side, uh, we put together a building committee. A building committee consists of three fire captains and six firefighters. Uh, we have representatives from each station and each shift, and then our deputy chief, Chief Scarpa, is our staff liaison with that committee. So he attends most of those meetings, um, and then provides advice when asked, um, but, uh, that's the committee that's been meeting, uh, almost every week, or every other week, uh, along with our, um, development services liaison, Bert. Bert seems meeting invites almost daily, but, uh, they've been meeting quite a bit. So a little about the building where we are today. Uh, you can see Fire Station 74, 74, we're proposing is about 9,000 square feet, and I will, uh, get to a footprint of that here shortly. Uh, for comparison, Station 72 is 18,345 square feet, that was built 10 years ago. Uh, Fire Station 73 is currently 6,800 square feet, built in 1989. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we brought forward to, uh, that building needs some renovation, uh, as well as some expansion. That's where we started this process, was off those plans for Station, Station 73, what it would end up with its expansion to house the crews that are there. So that's how we got where we are on the 9,000 square foot. So a little bit about the role of the construction manager, uh, which is Macallan Gordon, as I say, said they are participating in the design. Uh, part of their job is to suggest efficiencies and ways to help reduce costs. Um, and then, how we got to today is they brought us up to speed with their anticipated, uh, if you remember, uh, they will bring us a, a guaranteed maximum price when we get to a certain point in the process, but they are, um, evaluating that every day as we go, and so, but we got the programming done, the footprint done, and some of the exterior materials and all that, they brought us a price, uh, that was above what our anticipated budget was. Um, so that's part of the reason why we're here tonight as well. But, so their role is to help us reduce costs, which they, they've done in some of those, some of those meetings, and they consulted with their subcontractors to anticipate what And they consulted with their subcontractors to anticipate what those bids will be when the bids are let. A little bit about how that works. So, so far, nothing for that project has been bid. Nobody's bid on anything for building the building. So what they do, once we get to a final design, is they put those bids out in packages. And so for instance, you'll have the concrete package, you'll have the plumbing package. And through construction manager, we, as a department, will have input on who those contractors, subcontractors are. So that's part of their job as a construction manager, to organize all that. One of the questions we were asked about is construction management fees. What we have, there's a percentage that is part of the project. The current, based on the current project budget, anticipation that their construction management fees are about $99,000. General conditions are about $310,000, and your bonds and insurance, about $82,000. And I had to ask, because I didn't know what general conditions were, because that seemed like a lot of money to me. But if you look at it, general conditions are those indirect costs. And some of the things that they reference, not just McAllen Gordon, but by doing some research, management staff, job site trailers, phones, temporary roads for access, temporary utilities, safety and cleaning, so those kind of things all go into that. And based on industry standard, industry standard for general conditions for commercial construction is about 15%. Their first document proposed it at 15.8%. So they're not too far out of line. We have not discussed with them what that includes, or does it include more than the industry standard? One of the things I found interesting in researching construction manager is that every subcontractor in a hard bid builds in general conditions. In a construction manager type of delivery, the subcontractor general conditions are built into the construction manager's general conditions. So, in theory, you shouldn't be paying overhead to both. So, how did we get here? I'm here with my hat in hand because I found out through this process, I didn't ask the right questions when we started this in 2016. I asked what it would cost to build a new building, based on square footage, and they told me. What I should have asked is what would a project like this cost, with this building being square footage, whatever it was. We originally brought you in 2016, $3.65 million, that was fire truck and station. Our current estimated cost is $5.862 million, fire truck and fire station. So if you take that truck out, which has been purchased, you're at about $5.1 million, and then $2.9 something million without the truck. So, here's my reasons for the increase, I believe. As I stated, didn't ask the right questions, didn't include project costs. Another thing we missed in our haste back in 2016, kind of need some furniture, furnishings and equipment. We've gone over, the equipment committee along with the architect provided us some very extensive lists. As you can see there, that's going to be almost $300,000. We started off with a four bunk building, four bunk rooms. And I went back to that committee and told them that we need to plan for six. Part of the issue we have right now at Station 3 is we have one large bunk room that only sleeps four. We need to plan for the future. If down the road, Med-Ac wants to go in there, it'd be very costly to add bunk rooms onto that building if we built it with four. If down the road, the city puts a squad out there, again, it'd be very costly to add bunk rooms for two more people. So that addition was about 744 square foot, to the tune of about $325,000. We decided that we wanted to add about 10% more in contingencies, just for the what ifs and in case, so we've added that. Made note of site preparation costs, we grossly underestimated that. I didn't know Bert thought so much to move. They've told us it's going to take about 90 dump truck loads, I believe, to get that piece of ground buildable, to remove 90 dump truck loads. So we look back, and we know that the 47th Street site, this paled in comparison to the site challenges that would have. This has a 17-foot drop from west to east. If this one's 17-foot, 47th Street's about 30-foot, east to west. So it would have a substantial site cost issue. And then the Woodland and Johnson Drive has a drop south to north. So, site preparation costs are going to be pricey, whichever site we would have landed on. Next thing to talk about is the exterior. I have a rendering here, but we fashioned this after the Justice Center in Fire Station 72, which is a mix of brick, stone, and stucco. I will note that the city's commercial building requirements requires a 30% exterior of stone or brick. But in talking to our planning director, Fire Station has no requirement, so we could be stucco from ground to brick line, if that's what we choose. We kind of wanted to blend in with the neighborhood. And so you'll see, one of the design elements, you'll see is a standing seam metal pitch roof as opposed to a flat roof. That $85,000 is if we went with ripping asphalt shingle, as opposed to the standing seam. We didn't ask for a cost savings to go to a flat roof because of all the problems we have with flat roofs, all the time anyway. So, we wanted to blend into the neighborhood, have a pitch roof. We think standing seam metal roof costs a little more, life expectancy is a lot longer. All of you with asphalt shingle roofs know you have to replace them about every 20 years, even though you buy a 50-year shingle. Standing seam metal roofs typically last much longer than 20 years. The bifold doors, we've been to Station 72, we put that on, in Station 72, we built it. We sold it at the time as a safety issue. And my explanation to the council at the time, when we built that, is when you're sitting in a fire truck and you hit the button to open the door, once it's out of your view, a lot of times our drivers forget they have three or more feet above them. We buy a lot of bottom panels of doors. A bifold door, when your vision is clear, it's clear floor to ceiling. In 10 years we've been there, we have never hit one of those doors, we've never damaged one of those doors. They're extremely low maintenance, so we proposed having those in there. If we took those out and went with the same type of doors we have on Stations 1 and 3, it would save us about $39,000. And one of the other things we found through a lot of discussions, the market, construction market, it's busy. And we're going to pay a premium. Everybody we've talked to that said the economic downturn in 2008 and '09 drove a lot of skilled labor out of the market, and a lot of them just haven't came back. So you're paying a premium for that skilled labor. And you can see up there, just some of the things that, in doing some research, reasons costs are up, the impact of natural disasters on material production and demand are just keep driving the construction costs up. So here is one rendering. This is a little dark, but you can see, the red in this is the brick, the yellow's the stucco, you can see the stone accents. The stone breaks up the difference between the brick and stucco, and then around the entries. Standing seam roof, it's a little lighter than that. But this is what it would look like. Cost comparisons, we were asked to compare costs. They are all over the board when you start talking to different fire departments or cities. So what's your construction cost, what's your project cost? Everybody picks and chooses what to include in the building and what to include in the project. As you can see, Station 74, building by itself, $353 a square foot. Overall building in sight, less the contingencies, about $437 a square foot. With contingency, puts us about $450 a square foot. For comparison, our architect provided us this because he's currently doing a project in St. Joseph. You can see our apparatus base is about 55% of the building with about 45% living quarters compared to the St. Joe, they're at about 51 and 49, minimal. So there's St. Joe Station, it's about a year old, they adjusted for escalation, about $323 a square foot. If you drop down Kansas, Missouri, what you see here, Station 39, $7,584 square foot. Now they're less than us. One of the things that we keep hearing is economy of scale, which is illustrated very well in Station 72. And 10 years ago, we were part of a 61,000 square foot project. And you can see with market escalation, today's dollars, they'd be about $221 a square foot. Guess if you buy like five truckloads of brick, it's cheaper than one truckload of brick. Gardner, we reached out to them, they recently built, there's a pre-engineered metal building. Even at that, they were still at $286 a square foot. And then the last one we have here, Station 35 in Kansas City, Missouri, a 19,800 square foot two-story. Had some extensive site issues. Their building alone was $501 a square foot, and the building in sight was 610. So, the more you ask, the more numbers you got. So it leaves us with some options. So, city manager and finance director have, we'll see in the packet, have proposed a funding for this. That would be, approve one of those funding options would be an option. Second option would be to finish the design and hard bid the project, get away from the construction manager. Don't really know if there'd be any savings, hard bidding it. Would definitely delay construction. And then we always run the risk of any delays driving up the higher construction cost. We were able to find, construction costs have gone up 1 and 3/4% just in the fourth quarter of '17. So, every day we wait, it goes up. There's another rendering of what it would look like looking to the southwest. Questions?
Councilmember, any questions or comments? Senator Meyer?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Just not to get too far into the weeds on the background, but I assume in 2016, when we initially budgeted this, you spoke with an architect and maybe a contractor as well to get some... Okay, I'm trying to figure out how we got a 40% increase and nowhere along the line, the architect we hired or the construction manager we hired raised a red flag on it. I'm just trying to figure that out.
So, back in 2016, we honestly didn't think Station 4 would get the approval that it got, so we kind of rushed into it, I kind of rushed into it. Only asked an architect, he told me only the part that he cared about. He answered exactly what I asked, didn't ask a contractor. So, that is my fault, that's for sure.
Neither him nor there. So we brought on the architect, the architects we have now, did they look at the budget and okayed it before we hired a construction manager?
Nobody's ever okayed the budget. We were told from the beginning, it would be a challenge to get there. I didn't feel, until we had a number to bring back, it made sense to get the construction company on board to where we are today. We don't have that construction manager contract with them yet, so those fees I told you about, we're not on the hook for those. We did employ them for pre-construction services. There's been a lot of hesitation from him, when we started talking about, you know, here's what we want, here's what we need. You know, the answer kept being, well, we'll need to check with our contractors, we'll need to put this in our computer.
Okay.
I'm just curious about, you mentioned that the price is different if you go with the 100% stucco versus the 30% stone and brick. I realize, you know, you talked about wanting to make it match with what the neighborhood looks like. What is the price difference?
That I don't... We haven't asked them. I don't know that that would be an appealing-looking building, and I didn't ask it. But we did ask planning today if, you know, what are the requirements? They said, well, Fire Station, you know, you don't have those same, because how the requirements of a commercial building would have. So, we have not asked that question. So I don't have that answer.
Any other questions, Mr. Zimmerman?
So, first off, John, is it estimating construction fund?
I will not be retiring you going into construction if you're...
I noticed in your comparisons that you had several different numbers. I'm not clear, I don't think some of those numbers had the owner furnished equipment in there. So it's tough, it's very difficult to compare apples to apples. I'm only sharing that as an observation. And I do understand the missing estimate on the ground work. As we proceed forward with the project, I think there's been a little bit of conversation about the possibility of having, working with the architect and engineers to include some alternates in the bid process so we can better manage the cost as we move forward in the project. So, been any more conversation about that?
There has, and some of these I showed you up here were the, were asked to be as options that have these cost savings as options. But we meet again this week, and so we could have those discussions or ask for other options.
Might be worth looking into, help control that cost going forward.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes, John, I'm glad to put this slide back up for those that ask a question on this particular one. You said these are pretty much percentage-based, these costs for... Okay, I'm not sure this is the exact one I wanted either.
That one.
That one, yeah. You said these were generally percentage-based, so is these percentages based on the 3.8 million or the 5.8 million?
On the proposed cost of the Fire Station. So, general conditions at 15.8% was proposed at $310,000. Bonds and insurance was 2.2% at $81,000. And the construction management fee was 3%, or excuse me, it was 3% at $99,000. That was based on the projected costs of the building.
These numbers are going up too, is what I'm seeing.
No, that's on their projected costs that I'm sharing with you tonight for the building.
It's 2%, or you said 3% for example. 3% of 5,000, 5,800 is not $9,000.
Right, that's on the building, those don't extend to the whole project. Those fees are on the building.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't explain that. So through conversations, and we just flat out have asked the architect and the construction company, is there anything that's going to make this go up? Barring us adding to the footprint or changing, no. They said as we refine, the prices should go down in this. Typically, that's what they see. As you refine it more and more, like I said, we're at 50%. And so, they feel that unless we go and add another bay or bunk room or change the footprint, the price, nobody anticipates being any increase to the cost of it, should only go down.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, I would just make a comment, kind of frustrating all the way around, but it is obviously a project we need. And I don't think, just from my limited experience, that hard bid is really going to save us all that much money. I think it'll cost us time and construction will continue to increase in price. So, it's probably a situation that we're kind of stuck with. But I would say as we maybe look at some improvements, so the other fire stations may be engaged, the architects, the construction engineers that we have.
Already have. I did learn one thing so far.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, and since funding is one of the issues that we're looking at, I do know when the council members raised the mill lobby, it was for this Fire Station and the fire truck and the 12 firefighters. and the fire truck, and the twelve firefighters, and the five police officers, for when the grant ran out. And obviously, we cannot fund staff with a temporary tax, but I would like in the upcoming budget for the council to look at, and with this, funding the entire thing from the Johnson County Tax, since it hadn't passed at the time that the mill levy increased that it has since, funding this with the Johnson County Tax, and returning that difference of the mill levy, of the building and the truck, to the residents of Shawnee, and really what hit this home even more, is I come in tonight, and I have a letter on my desk from United Municipal Services, finding out that nearly one in six residents in Johnson County live in households with income less than two-hundred percent, have the federal poverty level. So, I would like to see us, in the upcoming budget, lower completely from this fire station and truck with the Johnson County Tax, and lower the mill levy, the difference. So, that being said, what we are making a motion for right now, the recommended action is to consider approving the preliminary plans for Fire Station Seventy-Four, and providing direction for funding through a combination of the unallocated county sales tax dollars and debt service, or for the entire increase, to be funded from the debt service, or personally, I would like to see the entire thing funded through the Johnson County Tax. So I will accept the motion. Mr. Jenkins?
Before we put a motion, just wanted to clear on this, how we're gonna word this motion, because I like what you propose, but that sets well what they decide. One, give us another back to the person that thinks that will propose this project, and we are using that county sales tax for the intended purpose of this public safety, I think that's all I wrote and all that, not happy to talk to this much more, if I get smacked upside the head or something to do, that much of the cost increasing the budget, but we do need the fire station, so it teaches us to stay in that position, we need the fire station, so how do we word this, this motion where it adopts what you had proposed there with your suggestion? Because right now, it's talking about bond funding as well, and I don't want to necessarily go there.
Mr. Neighbors?
I would, I would ask that, since this gets a little complicated with all the different ramifications, I would like to see it in black and white, in several options that we would have, and for the next meeting, so that, so that we have the information, we have chance to do some due diligence going forward. So I don't disagree with what you said, Madam Mayor, but this is complicated, like I said, it's not what we expected, but we do need it.
So then...
Motion to play for us until the next council meeting, and so we have an opportunity to put together the options, in writing, for review by the council members prior to the meeting.
Can I just jump on, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we're not delaying whatever Chief Maddox needs to move forward with programming and planning for construction while we figure out the funding, so I don't know if there's a way that we can approve keeping him moving forward, and then we'll figure out what source of the revenue stream is. I just wanna slow it down.
I was gonna say, could we approve the preliminary plans, because obviously, it's going to be funded one way or another. So, could we move forward by approving the preliminary plans, and then figure out the funding?
Yes.
Is part of that motion, we're also approving the preliminary plan?
What's your motion?
Our motion was that we were, we were gonna table this, for the purposes of getting those numbers that are available first, we can all take a good review of them, but still moving forward with, by approving the preliminary plan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider preliminary plans for the Flint Street Improvement Project. This project is on the Capitol Improvement Plan, and includes the improvement of the safety and modernization of the roadway with the reconstruction of pavement, curb, gutters, and sidewalks, a shared use trail, streetlights, curb inlets, and storm sewer pipe as needed. The next step is to approve the preliminary plans. The recommended action is to approve the preliminary plans. Doug Ressler Schmidt is going to make a brief presentation, please go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I stated in the packet, the purpose of the Flint Street Project is to improve safety and modernize the roadway by reconstructing it with new pavement, curb and gutter sidewalk, shared use trail, streetlights, curb inlets, and storm drainage pipe as needed, so basically taking the street that's been there for, I don't know, a hundred and fifty years, as part of the original town flat, up to city standards. One thing to note is that this is, the project is being funded through the SIP program, so it's our very first SIP street. And also, would note that, oh, we've done a number of design-build projects in the past, this is our first street design-build project, so I'm pleased with how the project is going to this point, with us, with respect to the design-build process, I'd like to note that we do have representatives of our design-build team, with Emory Saff and Sons, as well as Schaefer, Fine, and Warren, and a project manager with BUC Roads here tonight, so if you end all, handle, any easy questions, let them handle the hard questions. So, some of the items of note that the council has taken action on this project so far is on September eleventh of the last year, the governing body approved a Phase One contract with the design-build team of Emory Saff and Sons slash Schaefer, Fine, and Warren, our design-build team on the project. Immediately after that, we had our first neighborhood meeting, purpose of that meeting was to introduce the residents, the business owners, property owners along the street, to our design-build team, to introduce them to the residents, as well as get some input from the residents on what is important for them, and just how some of the project would work. And, then, more recently after that, that was on September twenty-eighth, which was, again, as I stated, just a couple of weeks after entering into a contract for a Phase One design with the design-build team. And then more recently, we had our second public meeting, which was earlier this month, on February the seventh, we had good turnout for that meeting, what we shared with the residents at that point was what we call preliminary plans. There were some, well, in general, some support of the project, well, support of the project, but there was some input on some ways that we could adjust the project to be as accommodating as possible. So, some specifics on the street, it's a designated as a residential collector, which makes it a thirty-one foot wide street with concrete curb and gutters on both sides. It's a little bit wider in the section between Fifty-Ninth and Fifty-Ninth Terrace, because we have some on-street parking, there's some currently, some on-street parking adjacent to the Catholic Church, and we wanted to maintain as much of that as possible. There's an eight-foot multi-use path, on the west side, beginning at the creek, which is about the midpoint of the project, and goes north up to Johnson Drive, that's a continuation of some of the bike trail, multi-use trail that we've been putting in with the, some of the other Neiman Now projects, some of that was put in with the Neiman South Drainage Project, or more will be going in with the Neiman Middle Project, and then the project that's currently under construction in that area is what we call the Neiman North Drainage Project, it also has a shared use trail. So, when we're done with all these projects, one could take a bicycle, stroller, even walk from Johnson Drive and plant south to the creek, and then east along the creek downstream, all the way to a point behind the post office, is, and then we cross the creek there, to about Sixty-Second and Rogers, so there'll be all new facilities that we will be able to add to our inventory of places where people can walk and ride their bikes without having to compete with vehicular traffic. And then, we will also have a five-foot sidewalk along the entire length of the project, on the east side of the road, so a sidewalk going from Johnson Drive all the way down to Sixty-Second Street, which is the south end of the project. And, as noted, there'll be street lighting, the street lighting would be similar to what we're using in some of our areas downtown, that first couple of blocks south of Johnson Drive, which we're referring to as our non-residential section, using our downtown street light, and then south of that, we'd be using our residential style light, which is fourteen-foot post op from there on a black pole. We have a storm drainage system, there's existing storm drainage, there's a dissection road, so we'll be closing that drainage system with our standard storm drainage, pipe work, curb inlets, and then any driveways, driveway approaches along the project, that will be rebuilt, concrete approaches between the back of the curb and up to the right-of-way, and then match their existing material if we have to do any driveway adjustments beyond the limits of the right-of-way. And, not directly related, well, not directly related to the funding of the project, but it certainly is directly related to the project, but both the gas company and the water district seized the opportunity to, one, with a number of relocations they were gonna have to do on their facilities, they're running a new gas line, the whole length of the project, reconnecting to users, as well as a new water line along the whole length of the project, so, and those utilities are paying for that portion of it, but not only will there be a new street along the whole length, but those two utilities will have facilities that'll take them well into the future as well. This is, it's on my screen and your screen, this is the whole length of the project, what we call a strip map, Sixty-Second Terrace on the left side, Johnson Drive on the, on the right side, and as you can see, right in the middle is the storm drainage, all that storm drainage work is part of the Neiman North Drainage Project, that is under construction As I noted, there was those, some good input that we received at the neighborhood meeting, part of it was with the three property owners just south of Johnson Drive, from Johnson Drive down to Fifty-Ninth Street, two of those, two of them are businesses, and one of them is a residence. What we were showing at that meeting that night is in the lower half of the screen, where in order to provide more on-street parking next to the church, we were shifting the road to the west, that was getting that trail, well, what that was resulting, in order to get the trail in, we would need to acquire right-of-way, both that residence on the corner, as well as Madison Cradle Building next to that, and they raised concerns about what that was being shown, so we immediately went back to our design-build team that looked at it further, and with elimination of a, a couple of parking spaces on the east side, we're able to shift that road back to the east, and get a straight alignment, and remove that multi-purpose trail off of any private property into the existing right-of-way, so with the resident input on that, and a relook by our design-build team, we feel with the more, or the top rendering, it's gonna result in a better project all the way around, so we appreciate the input from the residents on that. Also, one of the concerns, this just kind of shows that a little bit closer in of how we can limit, limit the trail to stay within the right-of-way, and so there'll be some driveway adjustments with that. Timeline on the project, as we've noted right there, where we're sitting at today is we're nearing the end of the design work, which is represented in the blue bar, and then the green bar shows construction, with construction starting in April, and with the anticipation completion of the project by the end of November. Kind of in the, at the end of the blue bar, we also reflect utility relocations, which are taking place as we speak. Our company's been out there, the gas company's getting started, we'll have some, some agreements that have come to the council, we had one, but related to the water line work, so all that utility work will be getting started just ahead of construction. So, the next steps is, one tonight would be, we're seeking council approval of the preliminary plans, so we can direct our design-build team to complete those plans. The next, and then the step after that, would be at the special council meeting that we're having, Special Hall, on the March nineteenth, we'd be presenting what we call a Phase Two Design-Build Construction Contract, with a guaranteed maximum price from our design-build team. I'd like to note that that guaranteed maximum price that we would be presenting at the March nineteenth meeting would be within our overall project budget for this project, which that chart's included in the third page of the memo on your packet. And some of the other things coming on would be, as I noted, utility relocations are already starting, and one of the final, probably, the second council meeting in March would be upcoming to council, with some direction on acquiring the necessary easements. We don't anticipate needing any right-of-way for the project, but there will be some, perhaps some storm drainage easements, and some temporary construction easements that would be council direction forward to begin that process. With that, we'll entertain any questions.
Anyone on council, any questions or comments? Thank you.
One question from the packet regarding the residents concerned on the bio-retention cell?
Oh, yes.
Just because I'm not very familiar with that, and I'm not an engineer, can you explain, we need to choose not to put one in, what is the impact on the water?
Well, storm water quality is a relatively new thing, I mean, previous cities dealt with water quantity, you know, we've got the ten-year storm, a hundred-year storm, how we convey that throughout a project, and throughout the city. Part of the Federal Clean Water Act was making some requirements on what we call storm water quality. So, as new buildings come in, depending on the size of those buildings, they set aside some area for infiltration, or bio-retention ponds, or we call these storm interceptors, these curb inlets that swirl the water around, and collect paper cups and all that stuff, so you can bring equipment out to suck that out. What we were wanting to do, if the budget would allow, was to see what kind of water quality BMPs that we could do on this project, so with the removal of one of the houses on that site, thought that'd be a place that we could entertain at. So, while we're not including any, any of that work within the project, we are setting aside some ground that if we wanted to, to take a look at that on a more regional basis, that we could, we could do that, but with some of the, you know, as more of these bio cells go in, there's some question on, you know, just how valuable they are, particularly on a small scale, that the maintenance will exceed the actual value of, and certainly value is having more, larger ponds, where you can clean that water a little bit more, so, that's kind of a long answer to your question on, just don't think that on this particular project, since the size of it, that it would be that much value on spending a lot of money... on spending a lot of money on bio-retention and the maintenance of that before we dump the water into a concrete line channel. The whole purpose is to enhance the aquatic value of that channel so that already, you know, the aquatic value of a concrete line channel downstream is limited to that. But if we wanted to dabble into that in the future, we at least have a little bit of ground set aside. So that's the reason that we, while we entertained that idea at the very beginning of the project, it's not included right now.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I promise it won't be long. My name is Elaine Kopp and I reside at 13605 West Forty-Eighth Street, Shawnee, Kansas. I have been involved in a number of neighborhood meetings, committees, boards with the city of Shawnee over the years. And I wanted to have a better presence and be more involved in the city. And in 2011, I would have the opportunity to purchase a property at Fifty-Eight Thirty-Two Plant. That is one of the properties that is in question. This was going to be my investment for downtown Shawnee. In order for me to get it rezoned for my appraisal company, it was a single family. We had it rezoned for commercial. I worked with the city, they were all very helpful. We did everything that needed to be done. At that time, we knew we were going to have an issue with parking. And the staff, we worked out, so we had enough parking for our three full-time appraisers in our office. This building is a hundred-and-ten-year-old building. It had been moved from behind the church to its present location. And it has a block foundation for basement. There had been issues with this structure over the years with stormwater drainages and so forth. And I believe that the city at some time had made some corrections on it along Johnson Drive and Flint. I had attended most of the meetings, the neighborhood meetings in regard to Neel and Now, all the projects, even when we were talking about joining Marion on Shrimbush and Park, we had gone to all, most of those meetings and had been interested in what was going on. When I, I've gone to the meeting in September and then we came to a meeting a few weeks ago. And I found out at that time that they had decided to put a trail along my side of the property, but I know now that it was an easement, so they could do that. And I was concerned about it. I told my views that night. And shortly after that, I have been in contact with quite a few of staff, with Ron, with the construction project. And I want to commend your staff for what they've done. Hopefully, the way it was originally going to be was I was going to lose one of my parking spots. We only had three parking spots and we were going to lose it with this new project. And with what we've worked out and what we think they're going to be able to do, they are going to help me get that third parking space back. So my only concern, I have two concerns, is the drainage of stormwater. Now, Ron had told me that when you construct with the height, the trail, that it will slope down towards the street, as I understand. But the property to the north of us, which is vacant land, when it's rained really a lot, we have, we have a lot of drainage from that asphalt parking lot that comes down alongside of my building. So I just need to be insured that we're not going to have any other additional problems with my property. We've had, when we did the building for the zoning, we put some pumps in. We put additional dirt on. We've got a water garden in the backyard that was part of the city project. And so I've done anything possible to make sure that we don't have any more seepage in our basement. That's my, one concern. And the other one is what this is going to do to my business while it's under construction. I talked to Ron and he really didn't give me an answer of how long it's going to, how we're going to be able to park any vehicles while we're at our business or for how long of a period that's going to be. But I just wanted to make a point that if citizens have a problem, they can come and work it out with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can get all that worked out for you. Mr. Sandifer?
Doesn't Ted Industries own the?
They own the corner.
They own the corner, but not the house. But they own the, they own part of the parking lot, don't they?
No, the one.
That's the one right next door to you.
No.
They own half of that lot.
Scott, he owns the building and there's a lot between his building to the end of Flint. And that belongs to Ted.
Yes, we knew that.
And I think.
Now, isn't part of the parking lot Ted's right there?
Well.
Why wouldn't, Ted's a great guy. He would probably work it out with you and you could use some of his parking.
Scott worked out some kind of arrangement. I don't know what it was, it's none of my business. But when he put that driveway, that parking lot in, that asphalt parking lot, he had some kind of an arrangement with Ted, that he had some kind of an easement. I'm not sure what that situation was. So the parking lot that Dr. Scott will come in, that is his parking lot slash easement. And, but the lot, the corner lot is owned by Ted's.
Right. There's got to be something to be worked out when you guys perpetually park.
Well, I had a, I was in a downtown partnership meeting the other night and I asked him about it, Dr. Scott. And he, he kind of mentioned that, not at this time, that we wouldn't be able to park in that parking lot. I mean, maybe something could be worked out, that he has other plans for that parking lot.
During this period of time?
Pardon me?
During this period of time, while we're doing the road, he has different plans for it? I mean, if the city could get involved with some of this, maybe help out just a little bit. Maybe we can work it out.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to work out here, though.
No, no, I agree, I agree.
So I think we should move forward with it because we've got a full agenda. Thank you, Elaine, and let us know if we can help you, yeah. Are there any, anyone else from the audience that wants to speak to this item? They seen that or accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hes nay? Motion passes. Item number four is to consider rejecting bids for OW Fisher Chevrolet Dealership and Murphy Service Station Buildings in Shawnee Town, nineteen twenty-nine. This project is on the capital improvement plan. The project includes a period replication of two buildings in Shawnee Town, nineteen twenty-nine. Three general contractors were pre-qualified to bid. On February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, two bids were received and both were substantially higher than the current budget. Staff recommends not moving forward at this time in order to coordinate with the architect on a revised design to reduce cost. Recommended action is to consider rejecting all bids and authorizing staff to rebuild the project. Does the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seen that or accept a motion?
I move reject all bids and authorize the staff to rebuild the project.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hes nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly claim for February twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen in the amount of one million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Or accept a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hes nay? Motion passes. Item number two is to discuss city manager recruitment search proposal. On February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the governing body approved a proposal submitted by Springstead Waters to provide city manager executive search services. Mr. Art Davis, Senior Vice President of Springstead Waters, will be present to discuss the proposal and gather information from the governing body. Welcome, Mr. Davis. There you are.
I think you're okay.
Yep. If you need the overhead or anything, just let Stephen know.
I think you're okay.
Okay.
Mayor and members of the city council and interim city manager. Thank you all for inviting me here. And hopefully you got the memorandum that Ellis shared with me and just a little bit of a quick overview tonight. This is really just the beginning of a process that for you to begin to identify some of the characteristics, traits, experience, all of the issues that you think will be most important in a city manager. And you begin to take that input and formulate it into a profile. And as part of that profile, we have been incorporating that into the ad. We've incorporated it into a brochure. And I think in our proposal, you saw an example of a brochure that I've dedicated to the city of El Dorado, Kansas. And, but we're going to put together really a sharp, dynamic advertisement marketing for your community. And in that, there'll be some detailed expectations of what you're looking for from all of the characteristics and experience and things that you identified through the process. And then we take that and begin over a period of about forty-five days to begin to start searching and recruiting and trying to identify candidates that would meet your criteria and meet the desirable characteristics that you would like in your next city manager. And to talk a little bit about that process. On the, from the beginning, a lot of governing bodies in every community is different in how they approach this. Some city councils, governing bodies like to kind of make, hold that decision unto themselves about developing the profile. Some like to get input from the staff, whether it's the department heads or all employees. I've had conversations with the mayor and she's indicated that she thought it would be good to get all employees and get some input and ideas from everyone so that there's some buy-in into what we're looking for as the ideal candidate. But bottom line, it's your decision to make as the governing body. And probably I ought to talk a little bit about myself. I know I had a bio in the proposal that I sent you. I'm born and raised in the Kansas City area. Was master's degree at KU, worked for the city of Dallas. Was an assistant in the NEXA for a while under David Watkins. And then I was city manager of Lee Summit for about six years. And it goes back from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-nine. And then I was recruited and went to work for the city council there in Kansas City. Deputy Director of the city council, working for the city council there in Kansas City. Was there for six and a half years and then did, started my own consulting business and worked for cities and counties and nonprofits for about ten years doing executive equipment and bill-setting, strategic planning, development services kinds of things in Missouri and Kansas and in Iowa primarily. And so after about ten years of that, I was the city manager, the former city manager of Dallas that had hired me down to work for the city of Dallas. Was working for Springstead Waters at the time and recruited me to, asking if I wanted to come back to work with him at Springstead Waters. And I said, sure, and doing my own thing for about ten years. So the last almost three years, I've been working with Springstead Waters and working nationally, not just within the states of Missouri and Kansas. So kind of go coast-to-coast now and still getting used to the travel. Not sure I'll ever get used to traveling. But so it's a treat to get to work here in the Kansas City area, especially for a community like the city of Shawnee. And feel like I know it pretty well just because I live close by and know a lot of the city staff that are employed here. So just want to give you a flavor for my background and my familiarity with the profession. So a couple of issues that I just wanted to raise tonight. And this is just the beginning of the process. The, I think one of the things I tell all clients, and so I haven't gone and done any background on the city council meetings and looked at videos, but one of the things that is really important when if you're trying to get top, high-footling talent to have an interest in your community is the idea of treating each other with civility and respect in your council meetings as well as the interaction with staff and with the community. And so if, you know, there's a perception that there's, you know, I don't necessarily think that's an issue here, but in some other communities that I've worked with, that has been a challenge. And I think some of the stronger candidates have insisted in putting a name in when there's that kind of confrontational interaction that goes on on a daily basis. And because, you know, people are not moving their families into the community and it's a, it's a big move and you've got to, you've got to run a feel of welcome if you're the manager that's moving into a situation. So I just suggest that in your meetings, be conscious of how that might come across as soon you're being televised and repeated on video with your website. So just something to think about. The, another thing that is important is that and we don't need to really think, we don't really need to make any decision tonight, but at some point, we're going to have to post a salary for the position. And I don't really even know what your salary range is. And not that we need to even get into it tonight, but the communities that do offer a competitive salary tend to get the better candidates. And if the community is really putting forth a kind of a low-ball salary that's not competitive with others, it's more qualified than others. So just something to think about. Doesn't need to be, you know, astronomically high salary. And sometimes you just want to put a range. Sometimes you, you want to put, there's some little tricks you can do where you say starting salary up to, depending on experience and qualifications, so that, you know, it's not a given that a salary's going to be a certain amount. It's just based on someone's experience and what they're currently making. So if you do get a superstar candidate that is making more than you would have thought people were going to pay, at least you've left yourself some flexibility if you don't set into stone exactly what that salary is you're going to offer. And I really encourage you not to set it into stone, to kind of leave that flexibility because it's, it's not worth playing hardball, in my opinion. And I hope that you're paying my firm and for some of my experience that I've been along with this. I think it's, it's not worth quartering about a few thousand dollars or probably ten thousand dollars when sometimes those great managers can come in and save you twenty or thirty times that over a period of five to ten years in their skills and abilities. So just something to think about. The, one thing, we talked a little bit about process for gaining input. And I did talk to Vicky today. And I did talk to Vicky today, and this is entirely up to the governing body and the mayor, but I believe Vicky has the capability of doing a survey monkey type of processes, of obtaining input from both employees and the community. And we can build into this front end of the process, the opportunity to get that input and that mean you're tied or you're bound by whatever's produced. But again, it's more information, and I've always thought that local government, local democracy works better when you have more information as opposed to making decisions in the vacuum. And so if that's something that you would like to do, I know Vicky and I, and I had briefly talked with the mayor about that, you have the capacity to do that, and I do think that would be a good idea. It might push us back just a tiny bit of time in order to gather the information, put it together in a format that makes some sense for you all to both interpret and then to obviously share with the community at a meeting or in some format on your website. But it might be worth considering. The other thing, the other thing, I always had believed that it's important to have not just a point person from the elected body, but if we're able to have a point person from the staff that we can get information relating to whether it's job descriptions and/or salary, past salary history or benefits and those kinds of things. In my brief conversation with the mayor today, we talked about having that point of contact for me beyond just the mayor, and whether that is Vicky or Ellis. I think that would work well if the three of Vicky and Ellis and the mayor were kind of my point of contact, that I keep all three of them informed when I'm providing updates, and then they can share those updates with me. But again, that's a decision that I'll leave up to the mayor and you all to make on that. But it does, it is helpful when we do have somebody on the staff that we can coordinate with, if the mayor's not reachable, and she would typically have to go try to get somebody to get some of the information anyway. So kind of, little bit more about the process. When, once we put together the ad, the brochure, and the timeline, and we're moving forward with that part of the process, when we get to the point of a first review deadline, which I think in the tentative schedule that I had shared with me would be Monday, April That's when we would start, we'll do some scrubbing and background, not initial background, telephone conversations with candidates. We would then add them, what we would consider the most qualified candidates, the top, whether it's eight, ten, twelve, fifteen, whatever the most qualified are. We don't want to make it too luminous because it would be overwhelming for you to go through thirty when rarely do you ever get more than ten, twelve, or fifteen, that are really your top candidates. And we would then, as you know from our proposal, we had a, what we call hiring video, that we have each of the semifinalist candidates respond to video questions on their own computer, and they get, they get a practice question, and then they get three questions to answer, to respond to, and three minutes to respond to it. And that's, you all will either get to see that, if you choose to see it individually to your specific emails, and look at all the candidates that way, in addition to when we present the background materials on all of the top candidates. But it's another vetting mechanism of you getting to see these candidates in a very difficult situation where they're answering questions that they don't know what the questions are gonna be, and they're asked to respond on the spot. They're not trick questions, they're questions that are substantive in nature, and they're expected to know how to answer those questions. And you'll get to see their eye contact, is there a leadership presence there, is there some clarity of thought? And those are the kind of skills that you're gonna want to see, I think, in a city manager when they are being, when they have black hair reported, really, really dislike that part of this process. Most clients love it because you get to see a little bit of women in action on the spot. And so it's another way beyond just the written materials, which would be very in-depth candidate questionnaire, should provide you background information on them. It's another way to get another piece of information as you begin to narrow down that ten, twelve, fifteen candidates down to three, four, or five that you would like to bring onsite for interviews. And the other thing I remember that I wanted to reaffirm was, and again, this is something I tell all clients, the, it's important to have a level of confidentiality about when we do present names to you, that many times the candidates that are in jobs that are, that they like, and they're happily employed, you know, they may want to test the waters or find out more about a job, but they're gonna be more reluctant to do that if they feel like their name is gonna be exposed prematurely during the process. And, you know, as you know, in a community, if word gets out that somebody's looking for a job, you know, whether, you know, they were actually pursuing a job or they were just trying to pursue their interest to see if there was some chemistry and they had some interest, it can really put a candidate at odds with their, either community or with everybody. So again, it's important to maintain that confidentiality of telling in, to tell, you know, at that point that you decide it's time to either list a name of the final candidate or the top two candidates that you want to present to the public. So and a lot of this stuff we'll talk about as we get closer through the process. As in...
You had said too, right, that some of the things that you'll share with me to share with the council, the staff won't be involved in that part, so it's, I will make sure...
About specific candidates.
Right, so I will make sure that the council knows which items those are so they don't happen to ask Ellis or Vicky a question and maybe owe something that's not supposed to be shared.
Unless you decide you want them to sit in on the semifinals, which some governing bodies do, want them to sit in on that part. And, you know, my understanding is Vicky does not have an interest in the position, so that, you know.
Right. I just...
That would be, if she did, if she did, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Right. But if she doesn't, you may decide. But you made a comment to me today about that some things that you would just be sharing directly with me to share with the council, just so that...
Initially, yeah.
Yeah. Just so the council knows that some stuff Ellis and Vicky won't know.
So I guess I'd open it up, before we get into some of the details, open it up for any questions or thoughts, comments. Again, I apologize for some of the late, I mean, this was all on me, I'm getting the memo to you all late. I didn't realize that you had your meeting, I think it was your first meeting in March that was canceled. And typically, we don't, I had had some other meetings, and I had to reschedule some meetings tonight and tomorrow that I had scheduled, so I kind of made a quick dash to make all this work, and it ended up being a lot more difficult than I thought. I was out of town the entire week last week, and so it was difficult. Because if we didn't make this night work, then it was gonna be, I think your first meeting was for June and March, and I know you didn't want to wait that long to get it started, so I apologize for the lateness of the minutes.
Excuse a moment.
Yeah, so Mr. Davis, thanks for the comments, I appreciate them. You started off with a comment about civility within the council and kind of reflected on that, it's as much their assessment of us as it is ours of them, so could be, keep that in mind as we go forward with the process. There was some conversation about Survey Monkey and all this, I do think that's a powerful tool. And I think it's a good idea that we use that to receive some opinion from the city staff, from the community at large. And as far as some of the questions that are, has been addressed, maybe we have our own Survey Monkey amongst the council, and we can try and read through all of this tonight on the third of the week.
Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the questions? Because I've always thought it's good to talk about and kind of let you all extract from each other some of the collective wisdom in a group setting as opposed to just writing it, everybody individually writing it down. And what I've found is most of the time that I've worked, if not all of the time I've worked with governing bodies, they pretty much come to a collective agreement on perhaps important to them, being a manager for the community.
Go to the council, how do you want to do this?
You want to go through for questions, or is that what you're saying?
Mr. Mayor.
Bouncing this around, again, this is a lot, but as far as, you said we can submit by email final thoughts and things, and what is that time like?
Well, what do you think, a week, week and a half?
Well, yeah, I thought you were talking, if we could have our responses and staff and get it out to the residents, the Survey Monkeys, and have it within a week, then it wouldn't put us back on the timeline. Is that correct? So by the end of the week?
I mean, he is, how quick can we get all that out? As far as you all responding to the questions, I mean...
We could lay our job tonight.
Yeah. Tonight or within the next five days. And some of you may have had it already.
I'm ready.
So, yeah, but I think that's a good goal, so a week, week and a half to get it all, get the word out, you know, send notices out, emails out, put it on your website, send it out to people, I mean, that's pretty easily done, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want to walk through the questions real quick?
Okay.
It's also good that the public can hear and hear what we're talking about and what you're looking for. So what do you all consider the highest priority issues and projects that the new manager's gonna be responsible for their first year of employment? Assuming that they'll be coming in, let's say, July, sometime in July as a start date.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to start?
So, yeah, sure. For item number one, I tagged a few things. Needs to be a strong advocate for economic development, that's important for our community. An effective manager of city operating expenses, and a strong supportive efforts to enhance our city's image as best in class.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to go?
Okay, some of my thoughts, number one, to attract quality replacements for our many recent retirees. Again, exploit and improve on the chamber's new economic development strengths, streamline and simplify the city development process in coordination with that. Sort of help focus to develop the Neiman Now development and city center and get consensus there, and make sure the increased communication transparency, building on the solid basic structure we currently have, and also focusing on strategically for opportunities and strengths going forward.
Mr. Jenkins?
Good skills as far as budget preparation, analysis, and offering up to the council. I think that's gonna be something that's gonna be big. The capital improvements program, if you don't get a hold of that, that is quickly, we've got a number of things that are really moving forward at this point in time, and can sort of prove rapidly. I guess, who the bigger one did just come out of you?
Mr. Kenton?
I like what you've said so far, I don't know if I mentioned it yet.
I would agree, I have several of the same that have been brought up. The only other one I had in addition was some culture change management in regards to like our reputation in regards to economic development and things like that. So looking for some culture change in that area type thing. Is more?
Sure, yeah, I kind of echo what everybody else has said. I would add the West Side, Valley of Champions, Community Center piece of it to the upcoming projects. And then I'm kind of dovetailing up the culture of change, just somebody who is willing and excited about coming in and maybe shaking things up a little bit with some new and fresh ideas and perspective.
Mr. Jenkins?
Ms. Meyer took my fresh ideas. No, exactly. I would also like to add on there, I've had quite a few emails from citizens about adding what I would say with the cultural change, with protection with sexual orientation. I think that's something important, I think that's something that's coming up through cities, and that's something that I feel is personal to me and some of the other citizens in our city. I like to see the city manager working with beyond economic development, which I think is very important, but also making all citizens feel welcome, and the city be approachable for various cultures within our, our community. I'd also like to see the new, fresh innovative ideas of people that are trying something new, I think it's gonna help out our city and not the old things that have kind of teetered our city and moved our city forward. I want to see some risks, some challenges that are gonna really put ourselves out there.
Mr. Sanford?
For the highest priorities for the first year, I would say earning the trust of the council members, earning trust and support of our outstanding staff. I mean, we've got an incredible staff, we need somebody that can work with them all. Getting a grasp on finances with the finance director, continuing to have financial stability. Getting the no projects and support staff with projects.
And Ms. Constance?
I got a few ideas. Working with the council to really create a vision for Shawnee's future that's in line with the things our residents say that they want, and then really using this vision as we plan ahead and look at economic development. Also being aware of regional trends and transportation, development, housing, and making sure that we're planning for those. I also think it's really important that this person, and obviously in the next year, they'll be hiring quite a few new department heads, and so we need to be picking someone that'll be able to help us make good decisions around that, and somebody that can really work with all the different views and perspectives, I think, on our council and in our city. We have an incredibly, I guess, rich array of different types of people, perspectives, ideas, backgrounds, ages, so I think this person really needs skill to work with, a diverse group of people, and bring folks together around something that everybody can really come together on. And then another priority would be that, like Ms. Meyer said, the community center in the Valley of Champions, looking at what our residents... in the Valley of Champions, looking at what our residents want and how can we make this happen?
But, and I know the job description probably has in it some of the prerequisites for education or suggestions for what's important, but from an experience standpoint, are there any specific areas of expertise? Is it important to have some experience in a growth management city where there's been some development and I'm assuming that would be important with all the growth and development that occurs and all of the open space that you've got to develop, I suspect there's gonna be, that would be helpful, perhaps some knowledge so that you can hit the ground running and not, and not, you know, take the first year or two, start from scratch, learning about development 101. And so, things like that. What kind of experience, expertise are you looking for?
Ms. Constance, would you like to start this then?
Sure. One thing that I think is really important is someone that has a track record of making really smart budget decisions, maximizing the funding that we have, looking for ways to save our city money. I feel like we've had examples that have been shared from different departments, you know, and the ways that they've repurposed vehicles, for example, or, you know, had some efficiencies and I really wanna make sure we use our tax dollars as wisely as possible. So I think that takes a really creative person as well, so...
Mr. Sanford?
Yeah, I think we need to look at somebody with about 10 to 15 years of experience in managing and organizing a city of this size. Somebody with a master's in public administration, strong experience in economic development, honest and hopeful, and good sense of humor. Direct sense of communication skills, strong manager confidence and enough to, enough confidence to not micromanage and distrust the staff. Goes back to, you know, we have some incredible, let everybody work together. And someone that would be strong and involved in our community and all of the friends that we do. I mean, we have different functions, the people that built this city that forgives the hometown feeling, and we need somebody that would get involved and build people.
Mr. David?
To add on to Mickey, I think that's great, I think build on the events that we have and expand, cause there's, there's a lot that we can, that we can build upon that we already have that makes our city great and we make their city even greater. I'd also like to add on to Lindsay's, I think it's important to maximize our budget dollars and to utilize our money in a wise way and not just in a way that doesn't go through all avenues first, make sure we're utilizing that money. I would like to also see the experience level, I'd like to see a person that's been involved in the city like ours and our size, 10, 15 years, something like that, cause I think it's important. If we don't have someone that's knowledgeable of a size like Shawnee, the third governor of the city, in Johnson County, I think it'd be, I think it'd be an issue, I think we need to have that expertise, cause we have, we have that, we have that, sorry. It's getting close to you, so anyways, that's mine.
Ms. Meyer?
Sure. I would echo the experience part, MPA, bonus points for KU MPA, and also the economic development experience in particular. I would be interested in hearing from candidates who have worked in a city that has a dichotomy that's similar to ours with an older part of town and the infill redevelopment versus the western kind of murgo.
I had the same points, but with my experience, I wanted clarified successful experience. Just because somebody's been a city manager 10 or 15 years doesn't mean they're good. So I wanna see successful experience, same thing with the master's degree, and I had the growth management and change management experience with that, where they did that.
Mr. Kimlin?
Yeah, I like what's been said so far, especially Mickey's point about not micromanaging.
Mr. Jenkins?
It's really important, and I don't mean just a strong manager like a dictator, but one that's got some ability to interact with the staff, every idea is a good idea, it's all good played out and so there's great communication, they're able to communicate, we're also able to make the hard decisions when the hard decisions are there and you have to do what you gotta do. Looking at ethics, I think ethics is very important. And in ethics, I take another step on ethics because I feel like the city manager and staff has an obligation, an ethical obligation to inform the city council of pluses and the minuses. I don't wanna be cherry picked and tell what a great deal this is because that's something that the city manager likes. I want, I want me to make a good conscious decision of, hey, here's the pluses, there's the minuses, now it's on me, I'm the governing body guy, I'm gonna have to make the hard decisions and go one way or the other, but... In the past, there was a little cherry picking going on there and then we were getting kind of whatever the, whatever, we were being guided in this direction, I think we were wanting, they wanted us to go. I really don't wanna do that, I really wanna have the opportunity to make my own decisions up here and represent my constituents. Communication is absolutely essential, be good communication skills, you've gotta have that, not only relating, but also being able to relate to the employees and the citizens of the community. I think you already mentioned, let's go with that, that would be a very important one. And also want somebody that wants to stay in their lane. City manager has a very important job to execute the decisions made by the governing bodies, and that's their daily rig, but the governing body's daily rig is the decision-making process and representation, so I wanna make sure we stay in the lane, cause sometimes you get crossover with city managers. Perhaps they wanna do too much or they're so motivated they kinda cross over, they start getting this blend and kinda thing like, I'd really like to keep it nice and distinct where, okay, here you are, you got your job and we got our job and, you know, let's take it work.
Mr. Neighbor?
Another, one thing I'm finding now that when I look at my notes and other things being said, this theme is starting to evolve, so I'm gonna start my two minutes right here. First of, you know, someone who is gregarious, yet firm, the ethics part is very good, as Mr. Jenkins said, someone who can laugh at oneself, will be circumspect and be a good manager, giving consistent direction and at that point trust the staff to do their job and carry that out, would still be the boss and by all means be active and visible in the community, community in all facets, particularly those that they find interesting.
Mr. Zimmerman?
We've kinda blended two and three together here.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. So, and I echo some comments made earlier, this, everybody's kind of checking off my checklist for me, so that's great. Mr. Davis, you spoke, as you began this session, about experience in growth and identity, everything you said, bingo. Comments about an MPA campus, I think there's, okay. No comments here, I'm not gonna make any comments about MU. Familiarity with our needs-based budgeting process, I think this would be a nice thing to have and of course, strong sense of familiarity with Johnson County and state of Kansas legislative issues would be a plus. We spoke to personal integrity, we spoke to a strong communicator and a consensus builder. I've heard we're micromanagers once or twice, I really like that. I want somebody that has the ability to balance short-term gains against long-term impacts and vice versa. I don't wanna get caught up in, hey, let's do this right now because it's gonna look good right now. Everything has a long-term impact. And then, I think it was Mickey that mentioned getting involved in the community, again, that's a question for me thing here, but I think that's a great attribute to have.
So that's a good thing, is there consensus, it's good to be out in the community, involved in some of the civic organizations, I think, that kinda thing? Cause some governing bodies don't like that, so I think we do. I mean, the culture of every organization's different, every community's different. How about sensitivity by a candidate to the culture of a community?
Absolutely. Their appreciation and respect of our history is very important with their vision of our future.
Right, well, I knew that. You've got some neat history.
So, and somebody else mentioned the east versus west divide, I think that got brought up a couple times, that's a thing. And that speaks to the sensitivity issue which you're talking about. So I think we just checked off one, two, and three.
Well, some of us didn't answer number three yet. Yeah, some of us stayed. Yeah. So, since Mr. Zimmerman answered number three and Mr. Neighbor answered number three, Mr. Jenkins answered number three, Mr. Kimlin?
Yeah, I really like what Eric said about getting the full set of information, not just, I feel like whatever is beneficial to making staff recommendation, I'd like to see the negatives to or the downsides of their ultimate opinions, I think a lot of times we got one story and if we wanted the other data, we had to either find it ourselves. So, I think Eric had said that the city managers are to carry out the will of the council, not to tell the council what the will is, and so I think that would be very important to have that in our community.
Okay, and so I had several things that were already mentioned, but in addition I had honest, fair, integrity, ethical, approachable, open-minded, nonpartisan, and thinks beyond the obvious. And then back to the empowering and trusting approach to management and open, transparent, and regular communication. Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, mine are kind of a lot along those lines, I think I would echo what everyone has said about kind of an over-communicative style so that we can, they are accessible to us, but also I would like to see more of a philosophy that perhaps staff are more accessible to council than they've been in the past, so a kind of a change in that dynamic as well and then someone who's comfortable with bringing about change, but also understands the strength of the staff that we have right now and kind of lets them run with what their skill set is as well.
Mr. David?
I would agree with everything. I'm also a very approachable person, someone that door's always open, phone's always, you know, available, emails always, et cetera, those types of things. It's always important to have someone that's willing to listen.
Mr. Sanford?
And what I have for number three is to step into all existing things in our community or activities or whatever is happening in our community, to be able to step into it, to hit the ground running type of deal.
So having the confidence to do that.
Yes, the respect for our community traditions.
Ms. Constance?
All right. I think the person needs to be a coalition builder, kind of like we've talked about, they can take multiple perspectives and find a way forward even when there's conflict. I'd like to see them be a collaborative leader and somebody who really empowers others as leaders as well to really leverage other people's strengths and ideas and expertise. And then I think it's important to have our leaders be really service-minded and humble as well. I think when people enter into something with some humility, they're more open to learn new things and, you know, have some better ideas than it, other than coming in as though they already know it.
Good stuff. Cool?
You start, Ms. Constance, number four?
I think a lot of what I have, we've already spoken about, I had said it's important to make sure we're balancing the growth out west as well as revitalization in other parts of the city and making sure that we are sticking our resources in a fair way across the entire city. We have such a big geographical area with a lot of residents, I think that's really important. And everything else has kinda been shared, so...
Mr. Sanford?
Basically, what I have on this one is someone accustomed to dealing with pretty lean and conservative budget. And going down, I've got a good path, but basically it's a great path, but we try to continue it, but what we built in the city and developed, we just keep it great.
Mr. David?
As I said before, just make our city greater, we are great, just build on what we have and take the processes we have and just continue going with it, there's no reason to, as everyone says, to reinvent the wheel, we already have something, let's just keep going with it.
Ms. Meyer?
Yep, I would just hit on the economic development process again, I think we've done a lot of work in the last year to kinda change that and wanna keep that going, to revitalize that.
I had the same things and I would've had more on my list, but Vicki's changed all of that already, so just to keep moving forward as is with those things, so, yeah, I think I don't have anything else to add to that, too, we've got the processes in place that are working, so...
Mr. Kimlin?
Maybe I'm taking the square dollar context on processes, but I liked what Seth made on this last time of staff being more accessible. I know in the past I contact staff and they may have to go to the city manager to talk to me about something, and so if we could change that process where staff is accessible to council and I don't have to give permission to talk to the chief of police.
Mr. Jenkins?
Here's the thing we're trying to solve, but when we solve this, by the way, it will, we will have some concentric circles coming off of that with some maybe unintended consequences or intended, but to take a look at that and it's transparent, it's up front of the decision-making process.
Mr. Neighbor?
I would just end there on this one, build on the sound base for the city operations we already have, work on promoting the recent reorganization, enhance it, continue to promote priority-based budgeting, good chance and source for new ideas to enhance the existing programs we already have, definitely keep the governing body in the loop for effectiveness and increase in policies, future needs, and then closing towns with each of those. And the other thing is, be cognizant of what's going on in the city and don't be politically tone deaf and hang out to counsel, put them in a adverse situation where there's no wig of you.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Everybody's done a good job of checking off my list for me here, so thank you, everybody. Just a couple more things, I'd like to continue with, we did a citizen satisfaction survey, you currently do that?
Yes.
We did one 2017.
You and yourself or UTC or who?
I think that's very effective feedback from the governing body. And in the same spirit, maybe expand our benchmarking efforts against poor cities in Johnson County, maybe even outside of Johnson County. Everybody's already spoke about where we are right now in terms of city operations, programs, processes, and generally, everybody agrees that we're in a good place, we don't need to break anything to fix it, but we've got some great suggestions here, so kind of pick up the pace and keep going forward with some adjustments.
Yeah. And then the last one is just in the additional information, you know, there's one thing that I didn't ask and I just wanna make sure that there's concurrence by the governing body. My approach with internal candidates, I know Vicki isn't going to apply and I don't think Ellis is gonna apply, but... don't think Ellis is going to apply, but if there are any internal candidates, I always recommend, and that's great, and I always encourage that enthusiastically, people should have the opportunity to try to improve themselves in their own organization, and I've always supported that, and I think that's good. But I would also suggest that any internal applicants need to go through the exact same vetting process that any external applicants. Because I've had only one or two, but where there have been some governing bodies that want to take one candidate, skip all the vetting stuff, and then put them right into the finals. And I just, I think that kind of creates bad will through the process and through the other people that are participating from external. And so, I just want to make sure there's concurrence that you have agreed that any internal candidates go through the exact same process. Is that?
Yep, I agree.
So, Mr. Zimmerman, did you have any additional?
Yeah, question number five, just a couple things. First and foremost, I want this next city manager to have the will to stick around for a while. I don't want Shawnee to be a stepping stone on the way to something else. I think that comes with the comments earlier about being engaged in the community. And then, part of, along that very same spirit, Eric, you spoke to this a little bit already. Going back to the measuring short-term gain against long-term impacts, there is a cause and effect thing here. And if you bring somebody in for the short term, we're going to make short-term decisions, and sometimes, that's at the expense of the long term. So Eric, that kind of plays out with your comments earlier, so that's pretty much it.
Mr. Neighbors, any additional?
Well, just, you know, I think we're in a unique situation that in the past twenty-five, three years, we've had two city managers. So the new person that come in, is going to have to be a quick study to learn our city, our strengths, and their culture, and work to promote, and improve things going forward, probably giving strategic direction to, as has always been stated, strategic direction to our day-to-day in the short term, but also the long term, to maintain the Shawnee values and lifestyle that makes this such a great place to live.
Mr. Jenkins?
I wanted to be a person accountable, and they accept accountability in the work. Not stop-stutter kind of person, you know, I take responsibility for this, and I screwed it up, or I did great, or whatever, but they're willing to accept that and take it on. The other would be a person of conviction. These are going to be kind of intangible things, they're going to be hard to maybe see during the interview processes and stuff, but you know, then you get inklings of it, and you come back, oh yeah, that person's strong conviction, and they're moral compasses playing in the right direction, and they're not going to be easily swayed right and left. Wishy-washy people, they don't make very good city managers there. I guess it's kind of probably what I'm coming for more.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yeah, I really like what's been said so far, I think I'm excited.
I was going to say, mine's been covered. Ms. Meyer?
Yeah, mine pretty much has, too. I would just add to the, I don't want us to be a stepping stone or a final resting place for someone.
Right. Mr. Adrian?
Same thing.
Sandifer?
I've got, being willing to look into other cities, see what roles other cities play in their communities, and what they're doing with decision-making. So we'll compare to the masses.
Yeah.
And also, which I don't have on here, but having the courage to come up to the council when they believe the council's making them, is possibly going to make a decision that's not the correct or the best interest of the city, and being able to stand up and not be a puppet, and say, hey, I think we're going down the wrong road. This is why we have the staff and all the recommendations to say, we don't go there. You know, that's not micromanaging, and that's not somebody that just works for the council, that's somebody that has, they've vetted into the place, and they don't want to see it, they're going to go down with the ship, they don't want the ship to go down. So back though, have them back though, you mean that.
Yes.
And I think some other people said conviction, if there's some long-term impact to an incentive or some kind of financial expenditure, then you want to hear about it.
If they have an issue, be sure and tell us. We don't want to end up with a problem later, okay?
Ms. Thompson?
I think our city's done a really good job soliciting resident feedback, we mentioned the survey, also having neighborhood meetings where we ask for resident input, so I'd like us to keep that as a priority item. And then, one thing that was shared today that I really appreciate was both Eric and Nat talking about the long-term impacts of our decisions. I think that's so important, because we're not just making decisions for ourselves, but for our kids and our grandkids. So many people in Shawnee have been here for generations, and so I feel like we're not doing our job unless we're, you know, considering the generations coming after us, so I think that's important.
Well, I had a lot of it, and this is...
Not just written minutes and audio.
This, I mean, it's, my sense is, you pretty much all agree. There's a collective agreement on a lot of the basic things you're looking for, and, which is usually what I found, so but, it was like government 101, local government 101 tonight, for how things should go. So thank you very much, and we got, for now, it's a target calendar, you know, until we get together and talk about it again, we'll start putting together a draft, a draft advertisement, a draft text of the brochure that we would then share with you all, to kind of tweak. If something's inaccurate, something's wrong, you haven't restated, we'll give it back to me, we'll tweak it, and then we'll put together the proof of the graphics with the pictures and the logo, and something that's really a marketing piece. And then, again, you guys get to see it again before it's finalized, tweak it, put your comments on it. If something doesn't look right, or is not accurate, or not phrased right, we want to know. We want it to be exactly the way you want it. And then we'll finish it up, and then we'll get it out there, and start the recording, so.
Is there anything else from us tonight?
No, unless there was any, I don't remember anything else from what we talked about.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
Don't need a motion, so unless any of these council items, does anyone on the council have any item they would like to discuss? Yeah. Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Oh, you're speaking up here? Ray, you're looking at 75, 10 Bryant Street. Just matter of information that Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Kenyon were talking about is closing terms. The sales organization, that's called a ben Franklin Close, or balance sheet close, where you're still in the closing terms. How many people on the council are familiar with the monthly reports? How many people on the council are familiar with the organization chart that goes along with the monthly reports? Mr. Jenkins? Anybody want to tell me who's the top dog on the organization chart?
Citizens.
Okay.
Citizens.
Citizens. A comment was made earlier about possibly a citizen input on the survey monthly.
Yes, we're sending out the same question.
I just wanted to voice opinion on that. I think that would be an excellent idea, because I think getting citizen input on this, because it's been brought out, we had basically two city managers for well over thirty years, and this is a whole new process and the city's going. So I think citizen input is very important, I think that should give you any stronger, just go forward, give you some strength there. The other thing is, I don't know if you folks are going to give any thought to including a small group of citizens actively participating in the selection process. I think it's something that you just might want to discuss, kick around, see if you think it's appropriate, but based on the fact that citizens are on the top of that organization chart, I think it might be something to consider, along with all the other thoughts. I just wanted to make that point, that was all. Thank you.
If there are no other items, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, Mr. Jenkins?
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion passes, we are adjourned.